Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's 2021 City of Gloucester School Committee Candidate Forum at the Gloucester High School presented by the Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce and its Government Affairs Council. My name is Bob Visnick and I am from Rockport. I love to come to this beautiful city and learn a little bit about it, so I'm very excited to be here tonight. First, I'd like to thank all the sponsors who helped make this evening possible. Presenting sponsor is Amanda Armstrong Group of Compass. The gold sponsor is Ruth Pino of RE/MAX 360 and also the Cape Anne Savings Bank. Our silver sponsor tonight is the Greater Cape Anne Chamber Government Affairs Council member Bob Gillis. So, I don't know if Bobby's out here tonight. He's retired, he's probably watching Jeopardy. Okay, our rules this evening. You candidates are seated and will speak in alphabetical order by your last name. The order of the responses is going to move in sequence among the candidates following the first question. In lieu of an opening statement, I will read your personal bio at the beginning of the form, and I will do it very quickly so we can get to your questions, and so I'll do it like a used car commercial. Each candidate will have up to 60 seconds to answer the questions presented. At my discretion, I can allow you some additional time to finish your response. We'll have a timekeeper out there giving a 30-second warning and a stop sign with handheld signs that I think you can all see. We will allot you 60 seconds for a closing statement, and that will be in reverse order, beginning with candidate six. There are seven candidates now, one candidate having withdrawn today, and one candidate cannot attend the forum. We anticipate there'll be time for three to five questions, and these questions have been developed by the Greater Cape Anne Chamber's Government Affairs Council with input from the community and with Gloucester High School students and their parents. So, without any further ado, I will start the introductions. Kathy Clancy is a longtime Gloucester resident with 20-plus years financial and operational experience. She is seeking her seventh term on the school committee, where she currently serves as chair of the Building and Finance Subcommittee. Ms. Clancy has served on the East Gloucester Veterans Elementary and West Parish School Building Committees, and she is also a Gloucester council member for the Gloucester Education Foundation. Ms. Clancy has a bachelor's degree in accounting and a master's in finance and is the parent of a Gloucester high school senior. Next is Bill Marvin. He is a longtime Gloucester resident seeking his first term on the school committee. He works at Manufacturing Resources Corporation as a business development sales manager and has spent much of his career in industrial manufacturing. Mr. Melvin is a United States Army veteran, thank you for your service, and graduate of Manchester Junior/Senior High School. He has been honored by the Massachusetts House of Representatives for his extensive service with Gloucester youth sports. He and his wife Beth Ann have three children, all of whom are graduates of the Gloucester Public School System. Next to him is Keith Minio. Mr. Minio grew up in Magnolia and graduated from Gloucester High School, and is seeking his first term on the school committee. Prior to returning to Gloucester, Mr. Minio lived in the San Francisco Bay Area, where he volunteered as a parent teacher's assistant and school purchaser at the preschool cooperative his children attended. He has worked as concessions manager at a music venue dedicated to the education and preservation of traditional music. And as I indicated to you a few moments ago, Melissa Joy Texera Prince has withdrawn her candidacy, so we will not hear from her this evening. Next is Richard J. Roberts, Jr. Mr. Roberts was born and raised in Gloucester and is seeking his first term on the school committee. He attended St. Anne's School from pre-K through eighth grade and is a 2003 graduate of Gloucester High School. Mr. Roberts works at Beth Israel Hospital as a security officer and previously worked as an asset protection manager at Macy's. He and his wife Maria have two daughters who attend Plum Cove School. Tom Stein is not here with us this evening, but he is a longtime resident of Gloucester seeking his first term on the school committee. He has worked as a music educator, a college administrator, and professional musician, including over 30 years as a professor at Berklee School of Music. He holds degrees from Berklee and the New England Conservatory and owns a small business in Gloucester providing music, school admissions, consulting, and educational services. He is also an on-call substitute teacher for Gloucester schools. Mr. Stein is married, and his daughter is currently enrolled in Gloucester preschool. Samantha Verga Watson grew up in Gloucester and attended and graduated from Gloucester Public Schools. She is seeking reelection to her second term on the school committee. Ms. Verga Watson is a licensed independent clinical social worker with degrees from Leslie University and Salem State University. She has worked at Pathways for Children and Children's Friends and Family Services. Earlier this year, she opened a private practice, Cove Wellness, right on Main Street specializing in reproductive and women's mental health. In addition, she serves as a board member at the Magnolia Library and Community Center. Ms. Verga Watson lives in Magnolia with her husband Alexander and their two daughters. And way over there is Laura Wiesen. She is a longtime Gloucester resident who is running for reelection to a second term on the school committee. She has worked as a TV news and documentary producer and has nearly two decades of experience as a writer, researcher, and team leader. Ms. Wiesen is currently secretary of the school committee and the chair of the Ad-Hoc Communications Subcommittee, a new committee formed to improve communications among the school, committee, Gloucester schools, and the greater community. She and her husband Stephen have two children at Beeman Memorial Elementary School. And so, we will start with the first question, and Kathy, I will start with you. School consolidation. If elected or reelected to the school committee, you will be faced with budgetary constraints. Do you agree with what has been done regarding school consolidation up to this point? And what are your views on the possible consolidation of Beeman and Plum Cove schools?
So, I definitely agree with what we've done to date on the school committee. We had meetings at each elementary school. The conditions of our school were not such that learning is as optimal as it can be. The sentiment was people wanted safe, healthy buildings and state-of-the-art buildings that they could learn in, buildings that actually had, you know, minor fundamental things like a music room or an art room, which is not currently being provided at most of our schools. The plan that, at that time, we had discussion and we had five elementary schools, and the plan is to consolidate down to three, first one being East Gloucester and Veterans. These families and teachers and the children are excited to be having a brand-new school being built for them. It is what our community should be providing for our kids, a place that's light and bright and has all the functional spaces that they need to learn in, including private spaces for special education services. It is the fiscally prudent thing for our community to not build, you know, school after school. This is the way to get it done.
Thank you. Bill.
Yes, I am for the consolidation of East Gloucester and Veterans School. Initially, I wasn't for it. I just didn't see the need for, I mean, I had so much respect for Meadows Field and what was going on over there, but once I really sat down and studied it, it seemed like the right thing. I had been in East Gloucester, I had been in Veterans, and then not conducive to learning, a healthy, positive learning environment, so all for those two. And the horses, seems like it's left the barn on that. Drive up Webster Street, it's pretty much under construction now. I'm also for the eventual consolidation of Beeman and Plum Cove, which I think was part of the question, and certainly I think that that's probably going to happen at some point down the road and something that I think is needed. I think it's important that we have modern, up-to-date facilities for our young people to learn in and certainly support those decisions.
Thank you. And now Keith. And if any of you need the question repeated, just let me know and I'll do so.
No, on the subject of consolidation, I brought my kids to this, back to Gloucester because this is where I grew up. I went to West Parish School as a kid myself, and so one of the biggest decisions was that new school at West Parish. So, I kind of see both sides of this, consolidation of schools or just developing, you know, better schools on site. So, you know, obviously, West Parish is a fabulous place to be. As far as Beeman and Plum Cove, I'd like to learn more about that, and, you know, the incumbents would help me understand that, whoever gets reelected. And the constraints, I know that consolidating schools gets us more money from the state rather than building, you know, retrofitting new, old schools. So, there's a balancing act there, and I'd have to dive into the budget a little bit more when I learn more about that.
All righty, Richard.
I believe in small schools to begin with. I went to a small school myself. As far as combining East Gloucester and Veterans, it took a lot of hard work. I would love to see it go somewhere else, not carrying up on green space because who knows if they're going to replace the green space eventually. As far as Plum Cove and Beeman, like I said, small schools, some kids learn better in a small school than a bigger school. My kids love the smallest schools, they go to Plum Cove. Combining that, it could do a lot of different harm to these kids. So, I believe in doing my best for the children. I speak on behalf of the children of Gloucester. I'm here because of that.
Thank you. Samantha.
Can you hear me? Yeah, good. Yes, so I think every student and teacher deserves access to a state-of-the-art education in this city, and the only way to really do that with the state of our elementary schools is to consolidate them. I was a Fuller student, so I went to school with 800 kids. So, the idea of 440 kids in a school doesn't seem to be large to me. In addition to that, Fuller had access to a full library, a full auditorium, a full art class, a full computer lab. That's not things that every single school, elementary school, has access to, and it's a shame, and we need to do better. So, the way that we do that is to consolidate our schools.
And finally, Laura.
So, yes, I, you know, I agree with Samantha. Our children need to be in safe, state-of-the-art schools that have access to all of the technology and all of the resources that we can give them. You know, I was very struck when we were doing the public hearings about the new school and how every single teacher at East Gloucester stood up, this was at City Hall, and asked for the new school because the conditions were so difficult for them to teach in. So, for me, that was a very telling thing. So, the new school, I'm for it, and as a Beeman parent, I can tell you that we've got modulators that are really nearing the end of their life. There are so many things that we're putting money into temporarily which won't give us the state-of-the-art school that combining Beeman and Plum Cove could. You know, as a parent and as a school committee member, it's all about giving the kids the best possible, the best possible education.
Thank you. We'll start with Bill on this next question, and the concept for this question came from Gloucester High School students and parents. It's about support for educators. So, we've just had a very challenging year, to say the least. Other towns gave COVID bonuses to teachers. Since Gloucester teachers did not receive bonuses even after, according to government Baker, Gloucester was a model for opening the schools, do you support giving them a substantial raise in their new contract? And could you please support your decision?
Could you give me an easier question?
There we go.
No, I think it's a difficult question as someone that's kind of new to the process. I have a lot to learn about it. I certainly, you know, any conversation about, teachers needs to start with, they're valuable not only to the students but to the parents, to the city of Gloucester. On a separate track, we need to put a monetary value on that, and I don't think that, at this stage, I'm just not up to speed enough. I've studied it, I've looked at it, of what is that number and can we achieve that number? And I think it's the pressing question of the school committee election, and I think it's worth vetting. I'm totally confident that I'm, have the ability to bring people together and cobble out some sort of solution, so, and I like to do that more behind closed doors than in a public setting, and I'm going to try to do that, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Keith.
Yeah, I concur a little bit here about, you know, negotiations for salaries is a very private issue. I know that there's been, I think, an approved 1% increase, and I don't think the teachers are very happy about that. Yeah, and at the same time, bonuses, especially considering what has happened over the past year, it's been a trying time for everybody. It's also been a trying time for parents. And, you know, just recognizing that and what we'd have to do is move forward and make sure that we honor our teachers because they take care of our most valuable resources, our kids, and we can make sure they're happy and we draw in more talent going forward as far as keeping enrollment in our schools high.
Thank you. Richard.
Working at Addison Gilbert Hospital, you know, like seeing what a bonus can be like, we received one for COVID, and it brings a different attitude, basically. We can stay here and debate it all day, all night. I just don't know enough about it. I'll be the first one to tell you, I'm just souled on to learn the budget and where everything else comes from. I agree with these guys. We have to do what's best for our kids, and I'm running for the kids, and if that means getting a teacher, you know, a thousand-dollar extra in her check, maybe it'll be a different attitude towards everyone.
Thank you.
So, good faith negotiations is a process, right? And we're really at the beginning of this process. So, you know, the teachers give us a proposal, we give a proposal back, and they counter, and it's, it should be sort of a respectful process, free of decisiveness. So, you know, our job as school committee members is to be stewards of a budget, right? So, right now, we're looking at budget increases for just health insurance, for example, can rise from eight to nine percent in one year, right? Last year, we had a 1.2%, I mean, 1.2 million increase in our budget, and 900,000 of that went to salary increases. So, you know, we are restrained by what we get from the city every single year, and that money comes from taxpayers. So, we have a hard job to do as school committee members, and so it's not as simple as, you know, as not respecting teachers by not giving them, you know, a 3% raise. It really is much more complicated than that.
Thank you. Laura.
So, as a parent, as a citizen, you know, we've all been through this very intense year, or 18 months now, and the teachers were extraordinary, and they are extraordinary. They continue to care for our kids, and our kids now, you know, many of our kids are in greater need because of the stresses of this past year, as all of us are, but, you know, we're focused on the kids here. If we didn't have constraints on our budget, I can think of lots of things I'd love to do with it, including improved teacher pay. But this, we are not a for-profit corporation whose profits allow us to increase pay. We are a city, a city department with city taxpayer money. So, all of this money that we're talking about comes from us, all of us, and we are constrained by how much is in the budget. So, I'm getting the stop sign.
And finally, Kathy.
Yes, I think Sam and Laura both have explained very well the reality of being, you know, representing and trying to be fiscally responsible for a municipal organization, which our schools are. There are many ways I think we show appreciation. You know, bonuses are fine in the private sector, but in our schools last year, I think I could not say enough about our food service workers who had to reinvent how they did what they did, our nurses who, you know, clearly had a very different job than they had had in prior years. We appreciate each and every one of them. We appreciate our teachers. I, you know, I have loved every one of my son's teachers along the way. I couldn't say enough about what they do, but in terms of bonuses, you know, we are part of a city, and I think the mayor and the mayor candidate may have an idea of what they might think about, you know, one group or one particular position getting a bonus and not everybody else after such a year where even the DPW helped our kids be in school. So, it's not about, are they, you know, do they deserve it? It's about how would we pay for it?
Thank you. We move on to the third question, and Keith will start this one. And the concept of this question was developed by Gloucester High School students. The question is, what will you do to ensure that Gloucester's schools provide a level playing field and equal opportunity for all students regardless of their socioeconomic circumstances, their race, gender, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and physical abilities?
Well, I believe that Gloucester's always been a really tight-knit community, and, you know, I have cousins that are in the school system, and, you know, from my experience, kids, they get along pretty well. I don't know if there are any outstanding problems, but I think everyone should have the same opportunities regardless of any of all that you just listed there, but it shouldn't be just exclusive to, you know, just the marginalized, but also just, you know, your general school body. So, you know, I think we have to look at it in a holistic way, not a microcosm of specifics. And if there are challenges down the road, we should address them as they come, and I think that's something the school staff has a better handle on than, I think, the school board. I think they're in the nitty-gritty of it all every day, and they recognize these problems, they address that to us at the school committee, and we'll help in any way we possibly can.
Thank you. Richard.
Like I said, I've worked at Addison Gilbert Hospital, and I've seen kids that come in and they don't feel loved, they feel disbanded by the school system, they don't feel that they fit in. So, how do we fix that? Well, we have to start by enforcing what we have right now. We have these rules and things set up so they can be loved at school. They can go home and say, hey, I did it, I got through the day. But it all starts with us, starts with the teachers, parents, aunts, uncles, grandparents. They have to start basically telling them that they should feel loved and everything, and then guess what? Then we're perfectly okay. But enforcing what we have right now is the biggest issue that we should be setting forward.
Thank you. Samantha.
So, as a social worker, I could talk about this forever, but I'm just going to simplify it because as our role as school committee members, it really comes down to what we put in a budget, right? So, in the last two years, we've really increased our services in relation to our school adjustment counselors, mental health clinicians in schools, our behavior analysts in schools. We've increased access to services for our ELL, English Language Learner population, which increases 10% every single year. So, our values are reflected in our budget and in the positions that we create to help service the students who really need the services the most.
Thank you. Laura.
So, echoing this, it is about how we support our students in our budget from the school committee perspective. In writing the budget this past year, we knew that there would be more social-emotional issues than we know that our ELL, our English Language Learner population is growing. An important component, something I was very excited about, was a new K through eight ELL family coordinator to help bring our families in and help support their students. That's, you know, a very, very important way to bring in our English language learners into our system more deeply. But we continue to work with creating loving spaces. There's a lot of work here at the high school about non-discrimination, around sexual orientation, around gender, around religious orientation. I think we're doing this already in our social-emotional and our ELL and our general teaching our students and our faculty and everyone about how we all think differently, and it's all, all has merit and is to be respected.
Thank you.
Our schools have programs at the elementary school and at the middle school for this very purpose, which is, you know, teaching kids respect, teaching kids acceptance, kindness. At our middle school, we call it the Sales Program, Service Acceptance, Integrity, Leadership, and I can't remember the last one, Success. So, we are really trying to have it be part of what kids are paying attention to all the time. There are signs in the schools to, you know, basically reinforce those positive behaviors. I've been involved with the Gloucester Education Foundation for a very, very long time, providing programs to students in our schools, and, you know, some of those programs, you've talked about the economic diversity, you know, we have programs that all students participate in. It's not, you know, not selective, it's, you know, it's universal. So, I think every student has the opportunity to both have opportunities and be inspired and explore new interests. So, from that perspective, I think everybody is on a level playing field for academic opportunities.
Thank you. Bill.
Yeah, I think it's, what's obvious to me is that it's been put on the schools to help with social services and help, you know, navigate, help these students navigate some of the issues that you mentioned. To me, one of the things that, and two things that stand out to me, one is we have to be able to fund that, and I think it's important, it's a very important issue in the schools now, is to help kids navigate where they are, who they are, and the various issues that they come to school with, that they leave the home and come to school with. I think that's very important. I also think it's important that the impact of teachers on this particular issue can't be overlooked. Most of us have been influenced by very, you know, a few impactful teachers that made a, you know, that made a difference in our lives. A lot of us came from maybe troubled environments and stuff like that. Maybe it was a teacher or a coach that helped you navigate through that, and anything we can do to kind of build off of that is certainly of value and needs to be looked at, so.
Thank you. And we're starting this next question with Richard, and it is called Student Wellness Beyond COVID. The mental health and wellness of Gloucester's children is very important. What do you think Gloucester schools need to be doing to improve resources specifically targeting these areas?
We need to enforce what we have, like I said before. Maybe it takes one of us to go into the schools, talk to teachers, and talk to the students one-on-one as a class and say, hey, listen, what are you guys struggling with? What can we do as a committee to help you guys out? Like I said, I work in the emergency department at Addison Gilbert, and I can't stress how many times these kids come in, they don't feel, like I said, they don't feel loved or anything like that, and they're there for weeks after weeks because there's no place for them to go because they want to hurt themselves. So, maybe it takes just that one teacher to make a child feel great, feel loved, maybe going into the schools itself and talking to these teachers, the principals, saying, how can we as a community help each school out, help the community children do better so they can live a normal and successful lives? Because they come in, they know me by my first name, and they just don't want to go home because they don't feel loved and failing school.
Thank you. Samantha.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. It's, the mental health and wellness of Gloucester's children is very important. What do you think Gloucester's schools need to be doing to improve resources directed towards the students' mental health and wellness?
Thank you. So, I'm sure some of you know that Veterans Elementary School is a trauma-informed school. From what I understand, they've become a model in really creating a safe space for students who've experienced trauma. And really, what that comes down to is making sure the staff are trained to be able to identify behaviors as exactly what they are, a way of communication. And so, I have advocated for, and I will continue to advocate for, that type of model to extend from Veterans all the way to every single elementary school, to the middle school, to the high school. I want to see a golden thread of mental health services that's linked from preschool all the way through. the way through. And we've made sort of strides by hiring, we've recently changed Amy Cam's position to be a social, emotional sort of coordinator, to essentially supervise every single social worker in the district. And so that's really a really positive step forward to make sure that that golden thread is continued because they're all being supervised and working together to make sure that we're meeting everybody's needs.
Thank you. Laura?
So I think that this issue of the wellness, the health and wellness of Gloucester students has been sort of front and center since I've joined the committee, which this is the end of my first term right now. It's been, you know, nationally and in the Commonwealth, anxiety and depression and social, emotional issues have been rising. We know this, and then COVID came and it got worse. So we've been adding adjustment counselors, you know, before COVID, now we have COVID, and we're lucky in that the ESAR funding, which is some of the federal COVID grants, they do ask that some percentage of that money go to social, emotional. And just as a brief list of what we have already added, additional adjustment counselors at Beeman and O'Malley, a counselor clinician at the high school, a board-certified behavior analyst from PK to 12, guidance counselors for the summer school, the mental health, you know, moving Amy Cam's position to mental and emotional health coordinator, you know, we're sort of on it and continuing to build.
Thank you. Yeah?
We definitely have invested, you know, in a lot of positions and I really always enjoy these kind of forums prior to the election because it helps us get information out. People wonder why the school budget goes up so much every year, and this is one area where we definitely have needed additional support and additional positions. And this is what our kids need to be able to be successful and to be able to focus in their classroom and hopefully deal with some of the things that are going on outside of the classroom. We have had speakers come in for the parents, which I would like to see more of going forward, but, you know, we had a session on anxiety, which if your child suffers from anxiety, you probably are really looking for other people to give you help and give you ideas to help understand and hopefully having teachers, you know, understand what your child needs as well. And I think those are things we can do, both for our kids and for our communities, to understand what children are going through these days, which certainly continues to be on the rise.
Okay. No?
Yeah, I think it dovetails a little bit into the previous question and I certainly think that, I mean, one only has to look at the news nowadays to see, wow, there's fights at high schools all over the country and there's kids that are kind of having a very difficult time, the statistics prove that out. And I think we do need to pour money into it. But to Kathy's point, I do think it goes beyond the students. It goes into the family and I'm not sure where the line is on that, but I certainly think that the social, emotional well-being of the kids, the environments that they're coming from certainly need to be looked at and services need to be offered to those kids. You don't want kids coming here into the schools with a tremendous burden on them. And anything we can do to alleviate that, even if it's just small steps, even if it's a mentorship-type program or something, there's a lot of great students here at Gloucester High School and throughout the school system. There's no reason that we can't try and leverage that to help the kids that are struggling along with mental health and social, emotional issues, so.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, I was pretty impressed with what Laura said there. Seems like there's a lot of resources already, seems like a lot of times we just like to throw money at something and I'm sure it helps in a lot of ways, but there's also simple solutions that we can look at. I like to think of myself as a creative thinker. Recently I saw something on social media about some kind of friendship bench. And the idea of this was that if a kid was feeling lonely or maybe he was having trouble at home, you know, didn't feel like they had friends, he would sit on the bench, he or she, and then, you know, somebody would notice somebody sitting there and come sit with them. And I think a lot of things we can do could happen on the peer level where kids understand each other sometimes more than parents or teachers do. But the other thing is that it's not always easy to identify which kids are having troubles. So that, I think, is another thing that we could look into is maybe being more attentive to the quiet kids that may be having struggles because there's nothing more debilitating to learning than having emotional issues, a lot of what has happened over this past year.
And this one is going to start with Samantha. The Business Education Collaborative comprised of members of KPN's business and educational communities has identified job and career readiness as a priority need for students. What do you see as the role of Gloucester schools in preparing students for employment generally and specifically for careers in the trades?
I mean, our role is huge, right? So we, here at Gloucester High School, we have a vocational program that's thriving and we continue to not be able to meet the amount of students, the needs that the amount of students want to access the program. Recently, we have received a grant that's going to allow us to sort of expand upon this program and have, we're going to be able to hire a coordinator and hopefully offer some more programming within the vocational program. It's something that I think every single person on the school committee and the superintendent cares very deeply about and it's a priority for all of us.
Thank you. Laura?
Yeah, so preparation for the world is what we're doing here in part, right? We're preparing kids emotionally and we're preparing kids to hold jobs and have, we hope, you know, sort of satisfying lives. I agree that the career vocational education is a huge part of this. We have four programs now. As Samantha said, we're, we have a grant to hire a coordinator and we're hoping to add potentially, possibly, a healthcare field. Obviously, we also are in court, we're in relationship with Essex Tech where they have other, you know, quite a bit of other courses and we can't duplicate those, there's a relationship there. I think, you know, between what we're doing here at Gloucester, in the Gloucester schools and the new Gloucester Marine GMGI, and there's an adult machine, a machine engineering course here that's been sponsored by, I think it's General Electric Foundation. So there's a lot happening in those fields in the trades. And I think as far as, you know, work beyond that, we have, you know, we're preparing kids to think and to work and to, you know, to be successful and productive members of society.
Thank you.
Yeah, obviously, our schools are very committed to the vocational program. I know when I was early on the committee, the discussion was Essex Tech and their new school. Community feels very strongly that these are positions and roles that our students should have access to, and we're very proud to be able to provide very quality programs here. Warren Waugh, who owns many car dealerships, has visited our auto tech program and he has supported it and is amazed by the talent that comes out of our schools. So this new curriculum or this new coordinator position to examine what would be the next possible program within Gloucester High School would provide another opportunity for our students. And, you know, I think we need to try to help our kids at a younger age to be exposed to different ideas of what the future might look like. So, you know, those that are really interested in things like our vocational programs choose Gloucester and know what great quality we have, you know, and then guide them along the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's imperative to encourage young people that show an interest in the trades. I'm in the manufacturing world and they can't hire enough CNC machinists, they can't hire enough programmers, that type of stuff, and at good-paying jobs. And I think that the program here at Gloucester High School, the automotive program, the carpentry program, I've known hundreds of kids that have gone through that, ended up having outstanding careers in the trades, and it just makes total sense to stay committed to that, to that system and that process. I think in today's world, you're only going to see an increase in that, you're going to see more and more companies looking to hire young people. And really what they need is encouragement because it can be a little bit intimidating to get into the trades and you simply need some encouragement. So certainly want to continue to do that.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, a lot of good ideas out there. Again, I'm going to go back to like simple solutions and, you know, not going too much into the budget. The idea I had was to leverage especially entrepreneurial people in our community to be mentors and allow for apprenticeships straight out of high school or even during high school. So that's something I want to explore with the school committee going forward is how to leverage our successful residents in Gloucester to prepare kids ahead of time outside of, you know, before they even leave high school. And, you know, our vocational department has always been a highlight of the Gloucester Public Schools and it's part of the mix of the blue collar and the white collar in Gloucester. The mix is still great.
Thank you. Richard?
I like what Sam said about getting the grants in Gloucester, offer more for the children. I would love to see us get stuff more towards like a female, you know, trade where whether it's salon, nails, whatever, healthcare, whatever the case is. I think, talking to my kids, I ask them, what do they want to do when they grow up? And they say, I want to do, I want to be a hairdresser like my aunt, I want to do nails. That's fine, but when they can't get into the tech because they don't have the best grades out there and they're okay in school, but they have to come to Gloucester and they want to excel in these trades, I think the high school should offer more than what we have now.
Thank you. We have time for one more question. And Laura will lead us off. Recently, our communities, Rockport and Gloucester commissioned a study to study opportunities for regional collaboration, including shared services. To do so might save money and deliver better educational services for our students. What do you think of that concept and how might we begin to implement that?
So I've read the case study and the conclusions that they came up with were that the way to begin this process would be to start with some shared services. You know, potentially complementing Gloucester High School, which has quite a bit of, you know, of resources in the sense of options and opportunities, you know, with what they have at Rockport and sort of working together, potentially working together to hire, you know, administrators or organizers of certain departments. They talked about sharing energy costs, sharing transportation costs, as looking at those as ways to do that. I think that anywhere that we can, you know, consolidate and reduce our costs by sharing the load is exactly what we need to be doing right now. To move that forward, of course, would be the Gloucester School Committee and the Rockport School Committee discussing that. That, and since I've been on the committee, that discussion has never happened. So we have this study and we have some data to work with and we would need to have these two school committees discuss to see what the next steps are.
Thank you. I'll bring that back. Kathy?
So Gloucester and Rockport already share a lot of ideas and also some professional development, particularly in the area of special education. I think the relationship is pretty collaborative and taking advantage of the best of both and trying to make sure that if we're bringing in somebody to teach on a particular subject, that their staff is also open to that. It's complicated to bring two systems together, but I know the case study looked at, you know, what do we provide that's exceptional and what does Rockport provide? Gloucester, of course, is extremely strong in our science, technology, engineering, and math subjects. And the opportunities our students have, we have full, you know, 35 3D printer room of state-of-the-art 3D printers. Rockport has an amazing music program. So those were some of the discussions as to what we could possibly do in terms of providing opportunities to students that they might not get in their own home school.
No?
I think it's a great idea. I think when you think about consolidation and sharing, anything to reduce costs, as I think Laura said down there, is certainly a benefit to both communities. And I think as long as, at the end of the day, it's something that's going to benefit the students, that that's the number one priority is, hey, can we send Rockport kids to Gloucester for the engineering program or can we send Gloucester kids over for the music program? Whatever it is, I think it's important that, you know, the kids, it benefits the kids to the best of our ability and that that be the kind of the driver behind it. I went to a small school, I grew up in a small town, obviously. I like the feel of that, but it doesn't mean that it's not, you know, I think at this stage, anything's on the table and as long as it's a benefit for the kids.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, repeat, I couldn't really hear what you were saying before, but regional, you know?
Sure. That recently Gloucester and Rockport commissioned a study to discuss regional collaboration and shared services to save money, deliver better educational services for our students. And the question is, what do you think of that concept and give some specifics of how that might be implemented?
Yeah, pretty much that's what I thought you were asking. But yeah, this is something, I think, a lot of what Kathy mirrored my own thoughts on this when I was dwelling on it myself. It seems inevitable and it seems like the logical conclusion is to eventually collaborate with Rockport and consolidate the school systems. It's worked well with Manchester and Essex. I don't see why, you know, we already lost a lot of students to Rockport already. And so, you know, bringing the best of both worlds, like Kathy was saying, the renowned for the music education, Paula Cole came from Rockport, a successful pop musician. We have a lot to offer Rockport as well. I mean, yeah, you know, it seems like a no-brainer, it's just, you know, baby steps. I like the idea of baby steps, you know, maybe doing some, you know, before the consolidation, some cross-purpose education.
Thank you. Richard?
I went to Rockport High School and halfway through my sophomore year, I transferred out to Gloucester. I did like Rockport because it was a small school, very small class. I think the graduating class, the year I would have graduated with them in old three, I think it was probably around maybe 70, 80 kids. I don't have an answer for you, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't have an answer for that. I would love to see a study on it for myself, read the study and go from there.
Thank you. Samantha?
So the study came out, COVID happened, and we, as a school committee, have never really been able to engage in the conversation, at least since, you know, Laura and I have been on the committee. So I think it's absolutely time to sort of reinvigorate the conversation. I think COVID has put a lot of, quite a bit in perspective in terms of just costs and how we want to go about coordinating with local districts. Regional school districts do really well and I think it's time to start the conversation.
Thank you. So we've finished the questions. I'm going to give you all a moment to gather your thoughts, maybe have some water, and then we will start with our closing statements and we'll go from Laura to Samantha to Richard to Keith to Bill and finish with Kathy. So just take a few moments. Laura, ready whenever you are.
Okay. It's okay. So I'm running for my second term on the committee. This first term has been extraordinary and not at all what I expected. I am grateful that I was part of this team as we navigated COVID and as we hired a new superintendent. I couldn't be prouder of what Gloucester schools accomplished, you know, in the past year. And I see, I've seen firsthand, both as a parent, as a school committee member, all the amazing educational opportunities we have, the amazing and innovative teachers and the way that they were able to sort of change on a dime and start teaching in a hybrid way and then go back to school last year and really meet the needs of these kids. We have so much here and we have to sort of keep focused on our priorities of core instruction, of social, emotional needs, and from my perspective, on communication, on communicating more vigorously and more fully with the Gloucester schools' family and with the public. The more you know about what we're doing in Gloucester schools, I think the more support we'll have from the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. So similarly to Laura, I'm running for my second term. Like Laura said, this has been quite the first term. I really am looking forward to, if I get re-elected, to actually really dig in and do the work, right? The last two years has really focused on has really focused on COVID. We've spent a lot of time talking about masks, vaccines, nasal swabs, like things that you never really would have imagined having a conversation about. I am somebody who is trained to navigate really difficult conversations with respect. That's my training. And I really look forward to having the opportunity to really dig deeper in the next two years and facilitate some, some respectful relationship building with teachers, with parents, with community members, because I think that's really been put on hold for the last two years.
Thank you. Richard?
I'm going to start off by saying I'm not a politician, by far from it. I got into the race back in March when I was talking to my wife and kids. I started doing a little bit of research. And when I ever saw that our reading and math and all these other schools were at 47%, and that's well below 50%, and then the graduation rate for Gloucester High School is at 83%, or 86% and the state's at 93%. So I was like, enough is enough. We got to step up. We got to do better. I've talked to teachers, and these teachers feel disenfranchised from the school's committee. My, both of my kids, they're, they're teachers, their friends are teachers, and they don't, they would like to see the school committee actually go into the school and say, hey, listen, what can we do to help you guys? They don't feel like they, they don't belong. You guys don't care about them. So we, as a school committee, has to do better. These are the kids' future that we're relying on. We have to help them reach for the stars and help them achieve what they want. Thank you.
Keith?
Hey. So my name's Keith Midio. I'm on the ballot here. A lot of passion there. Yeah, and I'm really passionate about the education of my kids. You know, something that COVID taught us over, over the past year and a half is that we are all teachers, parents. You know, it really starts with, with the parents, because long before kids are in school, you're teaching kids, you're teaching your kids. So I've been working on that with my kids long before they went to school myself. So I, I'm passionate about creating individuals, thinkers, you know, Socratic little, little Socrates. I believe in the scientific method, coming up with your own answers. And, you know, I just think we teach our kids best if we teach them how to learn and not what to learn. So I think that's my impetus for being on the school committee. And as, and as a parent, I want to be more involved in what's going on. And so I'm privy to, to, you know, and can contribute in my own little way.
Thank you.
First off, I want to thank the Greater Chamber, Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce, for organizing and hosting the candidates for the upcoming school committee election here tonight. I've appreciated the chance to be heard and to hear the other fine candidates here on the stage. As a 28-year resident of Gloucester and parent of three Gloucester Public School graduates, I feel confident that I can bring a grounded and pragmatic approach to the issues that currently face our public schools. I'm also confident that I have the skillset needed to be a valuable member of this important committee and look forward to the possibility of serving. As a candidate, I'm all in on getting up to speed as quickly as I can on matters of importance and committing, committed to building strong, healthy, collaborative relationships with the various stakeholders, stakeholders involved in our schools. Lastly, I'm excited about being the biggest cheerleader for our schools and the many wonderful things that take place within them. The Gloucester Public Schools do a tremendous amount of things right, and I'd be happy to let it be known to anyone that wants to listen. Thank you very much. And I'd ask you to consider voting for me when you go to the polls on November 2.
Thank you. Yeah.
So Bill and I must have moved to town around the same time, which is nice. I have been passionate about education in Gloucester since my son was probably two years old. I got involved in the Education Foundation. Nothing is more important to me than to celebrate each student's accomplishments, each student's performance, provide them with opportunities to have that aha moment of, you know, being inspired by either a lesson or an experience or a particular teacher. I think our schools do an amazing job. We provide opportunities that are not found in many other schools. And I'm most proud of, of what we provide for our families. We clearly still have work to do in different areas. But I just want to correct one thing. Last MCAS, our schools were in the 58 percentile in terms of our elementary schools. So I just want people to know, we are clearly doing very, very good by our students. And there is still work to be done. I'm energized. I would love to continue doing that work and bring my passion, my energy, and my professional background. And I do ask that you vote and consider voting for me on November 2. Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Council, I'd like to thank all of the candidates for appearing here this evening. You're all quite impressive. And I'm, I'm glad, you know, for one reason, I don't live in this city, because it would be tough to choose between you. You're all so good. And I'd like to thank the schools for hosting us, and thanks to our sponsors. And don't forget to vote on November 2. Thank you all. Good evening.